...
I put news for this meeting. It's providing an accordance with chapter two thirty one, public law nineteen seventy five.
Invitation, solemn invitation, please. Commissioner Taylor? Commissioner President? Why is it here?
The United States of America. United States. United States of America. United States of America.
Commissioner Aubrey.
Yeah.
Commissioner Lou. Commissioner Sorrow.
Here.
Commissioner Rashaun.
Here.
Commissioner Taylor. Deputy Director Romero. Director Salai.
Here.
Do I have a motion in second to accept in defense of the reading of the minutes of the last public meeting?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
In a letter dated June thirteenth, twenty twenty four, Sussex County Board of Commissioners notified Cumberland County Board of Commissioners of a resolution establishing Sussex NJ two fifty committee and design and designating the logo and catchphrase for the Sussex NJ two fifty committee adopted at a meeting held on June twelfth, twenty twenty four. In a letter dated twenty, June twenty seventh, twenty twenty four, the Morris County Board of Commissioners notified the Cumberland County Board of Commissioners of Resolution twenty twenty four dash five forty seven, adopted at a meeting held on June twenty sixth, twenty twenty four, urging state leaders to pass legislation that will authorize counties, municipalities, school districts, and all local governments to electronically publish legal notices and digital publications. For the presentations.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Dr. Deana Rossi, the crowd superintendent of C C Tech and Deerfield Township Public Schools. And this is exciting because we had our graduation festivities in June, but we get to extend them a little bit for some of our graduates in the awarding of the New Jersey and Jack scholarships. John was unable to join us here this evening as he was called up to North Jersey. But at this time, we have some students here that are the recipients of the scholarships when I call your name. If you could please come up and join Mr. Silo and I. Okay. Our first recipient is Carly Ferguson. Carly, come on up. And Carly is an aspiring filmmaker with a heart full of empathy and passion for storytelling. Carly eagerly anticipates her journey into film production at Montclair University. Her dedication to her craft was nurtured during her time at Tech where she studied diligently in her chosen program. What sets Carly apart is not just her technical skills, but her innate ability to connect with others on a deeper level. Her empathetic and cooperative spirit has been a driving force in her success, enabling her to collaborate effectively within groups and maintain harmonious relationships with her peers. For the past four years, she has donated countless hours of time as a tech ambassador, has been a stage crew leader for Tech's stage productions, and was a writer for the school newspaper. Carly is humble, kind, and compassionate, and will certainly be an asset to Montclair as she was to Tech. Congratulations, Carly. Congratulations. Our next recipient is Jackson Bentavegna. Jackson, come on up. Jackson is a passionate student with an insatiable curiosity for the world of video game design, which he repeatedly finds the public thought and the honor of learning as a freshman. His experience with video game design began with uncertainty as he initially questioned his affinity for coding. However, Jackson shared that through his involvement in information technology at Tech, he discovered his innate talent and love for coding. His experiences within the C T E program not only honed his technical skills, but also fostered his creativity and problem-solving abilities. Jackson's acceptance into the honors program at Rutgers University serves as validation for affirming his passion and potential in the field of video game design. With this milestone, he embarks on a new chapter filled with opportunities for growth and innovation, eager to explore the boundless horizons of game development. So again, it is my pleasure to introduce you and congratulate Jackson Bentavegna. Jackson, thank you.
I'm glad you're here. And also, we've checked the free tuition. And then also, the board goes to show some free holders' commissions. We give you a certain degree of appreciation and also culmination. We really appreciate you. I want you to do one thing, both of you, and your lovely camaraderie that was just up here. I'd like you to come back to Cumberland County and work here. Perhaps so that you work over here maybe. How about going to work at you? And I gotta put you in IT real quick. It's coming up.
Congratulations. Our next recipient is Teresa Ingenere. Teresa? Teresa is a natural leader. She has served as a tech student ambassador for the IT program. She is a student member of our program advisory committee and is a member of National Honor and National Technical Honor Societies. Her commitment to her school community is unmatched. She is humble and unassuming, even though she is at the top of the class of twenty twenty four. And with that, even though she has a challenging academic schedule, impressively, Teresa also earned her associate's degree through our dual enrollment program. Teresa will major in information technology at Rowan University with an ambition to pursue a career in cybersecurity. And boy, don't we need that. She hopes to promote the fostering of a secure digital environment for everyone, recognizing the impact and influence the Internet has on us all. So again, it is my pleasure to congratulate Teresa Ingenere.
When we're done, we'll take a picture.
That would be wonderful.
Come back to Cumberland County.
And the final recipient, although unable to join us this evening, is George Cardona, and I'd like to read a little bit about George. George was a model citizen throughout high school and consistently exhibited excellent leadership and impressive work ethic in and out of the classroom. George has an amazing curiosity that encourages him to explore and learn new things. This trait proved to be beneficial in his engineering program. He challenged himself academically each year and demonstrated a maturity beyond his years. George is grateful for the time he spent at Tech as he learned multiple disciplines of engineering. He is eager to continue that pursuit in a major in electrical and computer engineering at Rowan University. George was known for his ability to lead with kindness and patience. And although George has a quiet demeanor, he offered valuable input into class discussions and projects. In addition to his challenging academic schedule, George was actively involved in his community through his participation in varsity sports and volunteering at the Child Family Center summer camps. He is genuine, kind, and humble, and will make excellent contributions to his school community next year. Congratulations, George Cardona.
The reason I wanted you to be here is because you have a heartfelt sense of these children. And they're growing up, they're becoming adults, and they're gonna move on, and they're gonna come back to Cumberland County and get jobs here. Right? Because we need you coming back. So what I can really just say to you is that Cumberland County needs our youth to come back to us. And just come back and see Dr. Rossy once in a while. Say, you know, the tech, making a little use, you know, if you're there. Yeah, maybe.
Absolutely.
There you go.
We'd love to have you. Thank you, everyone. Congratulations. And John, I know is on the phone, who was able to join us on the phone. I don't know if he wants to make some comments to our recipients.
John, go ahead.
He's on. He's frozen.
Is he there? Is he on the view?
No, he's in here.
So, hi, it's John, it's John Donadio. I have a tough connection, and I apologize that I couldn't make it today. Thank you for a couple of days. This is director. I appreciate it. Just want to thank the continued generosity of our company's Amazon A T T S H I International Doctor Association for their generosity that allowed me to establish and provide over ninety thousand dollars in scholarships to hardworking county locations, technical school graduates who continue in their education right here in the state of New Jersey. Most importantly, I just want to congratulate all of the students. Their resume and potential keeps better and better every year, just an impressive group of again hardworking students. And I want to wish them the best of luck. Then I declare them the best of luck, and congratulations. But thank you again.
Commissioners, please come up here in front.
George, if you want to come on up, you made it perfectly in time.
Oh, you have somebody else here? Oh, he came in here. Okay. Oh, and then he come on with the picture taken.
Can you see, can you see Commissioner, maybe get on the side of the students?
Yeah, we're gonna have to button these down.
Should be back up.
It's a wide, it's a wide shot, so. I don't know, put it way too down.
Commissioner Marchand?
Yes.
Miles?
Very good, guys. Congratulations.
Do I have a motion in second to open public comment on resolution items only?
Some move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone for public comment on resolutions over? Five minutes. State your name and where you go.
Sandy Acevedo, Upper Deerfield Township. I will be providing a copy of my comments to be placed on the official record. My comments tonight are in reference to item five on tonight's agenda, the reading of the minutes of the last public meeting, which took place on July the fifth, twenty twenty four. I'll tell you, Joe, right now, this all feels very deja vu to me. It was just a few short years ago that you and I stood outside this very building trying to prevent special interests, political party bosses, and members of our own county government from attempting a hostile takeover of our public facilities. And now you sit in the very same seat.
Excuse me, Ms. Acevedo, what resolution are you speaking of?
I'm talking about the minutes from your last meeting.
We have time for this, we have time for the public notice for the resolutions.
And now you sit in the very same seat, attempting the very same thing.
Any public comment on the resolutions over?
Good evening, all. Welcome, everybody. It's good to see a lot of people here this evening. I mean, it's a ritual for what the Deerfield, the Deerfield Townships. On the resolution twenty twenty four, four, six, four, the resolution authorizing the direct inmate housing contract between the County of Cumberland and County of Salem with respect to the housing of common county adult male and adult female inmates at the Salem County chair. I read this resolution, and I'm wondering how many inmates will we be sending? And what is the charge? And what will be paid from Salem County to house our inmates? And then on resolution twenty twenty four, four, sixty eight, it's a resolution authorizing a shared service agreement with Bergen County called Provision of Juvenile Housing. And the same goes there. This is a shared service agreement. There is no shared service agreement in the pocket. And there's no amount that we're not going to be paying, or how many juveniles we're going to be housing. So to answer those questions, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for these resolutions? No, can you close?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
As to twenty twenty four, four, sixty four, which is a housing contract between the borough of Salem County, it's still being worked out as detailed, right? Resolution says for, as it may be updated. And I talked to county council for Salem today, and of course, the question being the number of inmates that the occasion were taking. So I'm gonna say at that point, we're still negotiating the number. But the charge per inmate at this time is going to be a hundred and forty dollars per inmate. That's for adults, males and females. As to resolution twenty twenty four dash four, sixty eight, same thing, it's still a work in progress. There was a crush on juvenile housing given the few counties left that do juvenile housing in the state of New Jersey. Cumberland being one of those that shut down its juvenile housing unit. So we're looking for any possible place to send juveniles because it is a major issue. Nobody wants to send juvenile to Bergen County. We help it. But that at this point is subject to the discretion of their housing coordinator to make sure that it was a fit. And it's for the placement, and it's four hundred thousand dollars per night for travel.
Chair Corrigan, how many? How many, what do we got, about twenty?
In the discretion of the, of the facility up there.
I, I understand, but how many, how many juveniles did we have?
Oh, do we have total, yeah?
It's not, it's not an easy process.
It was, it was seventeen this morning.
Okay.
Yeah, it's one of the.
It goes up and down, but.
It's in the twenty four recently. It's seventeen this morning.
Just give us the ability to send it to a dealership instead of elsewhere.
Correct. Many times we get to the point where they say, gosh, we have a spot, but we need an agreement.
So this is getting to.
This is the precursor.
It's just, it's just having an agreement because there are seven facilities for the twenty one counties in New Jersey. And so on a Friday night, a juvenile comes in, and somebody from the jail starts calling the seven facilities, trying to find one that'll take a child.
Do we have an agreement with all seven at this point?
No. We have an agreement with five.
We're, we're working.
With this one, we'll have an agreement with five. Atlantic says they're not able to handle any inmates on their property. We have an existing agreement with them that's never been rescinded.
We have an existing agreement at the adult.
This is a statewide problem. Oh. It's a statewide. I've talked about at least twelve different commissioner directors in the past about this problem with juveniles. And very, a lot of sleepless nights, trying to get these juveniles taken care of so they're not in some type of other, which is basically not standard. It's, it's, and we had just lost another facility, I think it was Essex County. It was Essex County that wants to remove themselves from juvenile housing. That'll give us six. It's not a good problem to have in this state. So it's a lot, a lot of lost sleep there.
And the state is aware, and John Donadio is working on it very hard.
Yes, he is.
Regarding for the National New Jersey Association of Counties. And as to Salem, we'll send as many people as we can because anything's better than Hudson, if you know what I mean.
Not as to their quality of care, but as to traffic.
Right.
As to traffic. Mr. Corrigan, what do you think the cost per juvenile? For the juveniles, it looks to be four hundred dollars per night. More services, more programs.
Thank you, sir. All right. Okay.
So it's my understanding, I'm gonna read all the resolutions for the consent agenda, and then at the end, we'll go as a consent agenda, correct?
Correct.
Resolution twenty twenty four dash four, twenty six. Resolution awarding a contract for supplying and delivering drainage pipe materials for the Cumberland County Department of Public Works, big number twenty four dash one. Resolution twenty twenty four dash four, twenty seven. Resolution awarding contract for providing preventative maintenance and repair services for lift station pumps at various Cumberland County locations, big number twenty four dash twenty one. Resolution twenty twenty four dash four, twenty eight. Resolution authorizing re-advertising for or and acceptance of competitive contract proposals for community support services, older Americans Act service for the elderly and disabled for the twenty twenty two to the twenty twenty four area plan contract, R F P number twenty four dash twenty two. Resolution twenty twenty four dash four, twenty nine. Resolution awarding contract for providing translation transcription services and authorizing the re-advertising for requests for bids for interpreter services and sign language interpretation, big number twenty four dash twenty four. Resolution twenty twenty four dash four, thirty. Resolution authorizing application to and grant agreement with New Jersey.
Apparently, there's a problem with the buzzing online.
I hear you.
All the speakers are buzzing, but it's not.
Is there something we can do?
I'm not sure.
So we can speak up is the best thing we can do. We're hearing the people online, can't we? Sorry.
Is the, is the volume up too high?
Remember, the, the recommendation of the IT director was that everybody speak as well better. Close to the microphone.
Let's choose, boss.
If you can, yes.
Resolution twenty twenty four dash four, thirty. Resolution authorizing application to and grant agreement with New Jersey Transit for transportation funding for elderly and disabled residents. Resolution twenty twenty four dash four, thirty one. Resolution authorizing purchase from New Jersey State contract vendor for five twenty twenty four grand chair at the Laredo four-wheel drive vehicles with option for the prosecutor's office. Resolution twenty twenty four dash four, thirty two. Resolution approving change order number one to contract for providing committee and design services for replacement of structure number zero six, V zero, zero five eight, Chesna Avenue over Panther Bridge, Panther Branch, and City of Bylin, Cumberland County, pre-qualified for R F Q number nineteen dash fifty as leading general architect and engineering services. Resolution twenty twenty four dash four, thirty three. Resolution authorizing the award of a non-fair open contract for annual support maintenance for civil service for the Cumberland County Sheriff's Department, Office. Resolution twenty twenty four dash four, thirty four. Resolution authorizing the award of a non-fair open contract for annual software license warning fees for the board elections. Resolution twenty twenty four dash four, thirty five. Resolution authorizing purchase from New Jersey State contract vendor for nineteen Elite One, eight forty G nine, all-in-one computers, and two convertible two-in-one notebooks with accessories for the Cumberland County Division of Employment and Training. Resolution twenty twenty four dash four, thirty six. Resolution authorizing purchase from cooperative contract vendor for HP server and portable projector for classroom for the Cumberland County Division of Employment and Training under E S C N J Cooperative Contract Number E S C N J A D P A dash twenty two dash G. Resolution twenty twenty four dash four, thirty seven. Resolution authorizing the award of a non-fair and open window contract for the purchase of repair parts for the County Department of Public Works slash motor pool. Resolution twenty twenty four dash four, thirty eight. Resolution canceling expired contracts for July twenty twenty four covering material, services, and supplies. Resolution twenty twenty four dash four, thirty nine. Resolution authorizing purchases from state contract vendors. Resolution twenty twenty four dash four, forty. Resolution approving change order number one to contract for providing various new services for the Cumberland County Youth Services Advisory Council, R F P number twenty four dash ten. Resolution twenty twenty four dash four, forty one. Resolution authorizing agreement between County of Cumberland and the participating municipalities for the administration of the municipal alliance brands to prevent alcoholism and drug abuse for the contract period July first, twenty twenty four, through June thirty, twenty twenty five. Resolution twenty twenty four dash four, four, two. Resolution affirming emergency to exist at the courthouse control area regarding the failure of a component within the HVAC system, affirming repair thereof. Resolution twenty twenty four dash four, forty three. Resolution affirming emergency to exist at the county jail regarding failure of HVAC system and admissions of medical units, and affirming repair thereof. Resolution twenty twenty four dash four, four, four. Resolution approving budget amendment fiscal year twenty twenty four, Michael Bridges Fund Program C R six, four, over managing infrastructure replacement project, one million, two hundred ninety-seven thousand, two hundred eighty-four dollars. Resolution twenty twenty four dash four, four, five. Resolution affirming emergency to exist at Maple Avenue Downtownship, wherein the roadway collapsed over thirty-six inch and fifty-four inch corrugated metal pipes under the traveling of the road, and affirming repair thereof. Resolution twenty twenty four dash four, four, six. Resolution amended resolution twenty twenty four dash two, nineteen, affirming emergency to exist relative to repair replacement of a forty-eight inch corrugated metal pipe under the shoulder and partial travel lane of Sleep Run Road, Commercial Township, and affirming the repair thereof. Resolution twenty twenty four dash four, four, seven. Resolution authorizing a grant application and execution of a grant agreement with the New Jersey Department of Transportation for the Mayor Aitken Drive over Sunset Lake Raceway Bridge replacement project. Resolution twenty twenty four dash four, four, eight. Resolution authorizing purchase of two twenty twenty Resolution authorizing purchase of two 2025 Ford Excurs, four-wheel drive with options under bid number ESCNJ23/24-11 for the Cumberland County Department of Works Cooperative Contract Number 65MCSCCPS-ESCNJ Cooperative Contract. Resolution 2024-449. Resolution amending resolution 2022-609 and 2023-466 entitled Resolution Authorizing Submission to the State or New Jersey Department of Law and Public Safety for Automated License Plate Reader Initiative Program. Resolution 2024-450. Resolution authorizing purchase wireless signal control from the New Jersey State Cooperative Contract Vendor for the Cumberland County Department of Public Works in accordance with Somerset County Cooperative Number 2-SOCCP Contract Number CC-0099-22. Resolution 2024-451. Resolution approving budget amendment for the Child Advocacy Development Grant Treatment Services Programs Technology, $143,213. Resolution 2024-452. Resolution authorizing purchase from New Jersey State Contract Vendor for 60 Dell phone for monitors and 60 Optiplex Small Factor Plus desktops with leap with accessories for the Division of Social Services. Resolution 2024-453. Resolution consenting to temporary closing of county road 615 South on July 27th, 2024 from 10:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., and on July 28th, 2024 from 6:00 a.m. till 11:00 p.m. for the 58th Annual Puerto Rican Festival. Resolution 2024-454. Resolution approving a renewal of commodity resale agreements for the sale of gasoline, diesel, fuels, non-removable chemicals, and public works materials. Resolution 2024-455. Resolution authorizing the award of a non-fair and open contract for 107 gift cards with the amount of $200 for the Cumberland County Division of Employment and Training. Resolution 2024-456. Resolution authorizing shared services agreement with Commercial Township for reserving of the county-owned roadway within Commercial Township. Resolution 2024-457. Resolution authorizing increase of monetary ceiling for legal expenses for services provided to the Cumberland County Claiming Department. Resolution 2024-458. Resolution authorizing shared services agreement with Cumberland County Board of Technical Education for video recording services. Resolution 2024-459. Resolution authorizing increase of monetary ceiling for legal expenses in the litigation matter of Bernard versus County of Cumberland in accordance with NJAC 5430-5.3 through NJAC 530-5.5. Resolution 2024-460. Resolution rescinding resolution 2012-173 authorizing all future street and/or road closings to be coordinated between the Department of Public Works and the Office of County Administrator without the necessity of individual resolutions. Resolution 2024-461. Resolution authorizing purchase from the New Jersey State Contract Vendor for data enhancement to the County 911 GIS database for the Office of Emergency Management/911. Resolution 2024-462. Resolution authorizing amendments to the shared services agreement between the Cumberland County Prosecutor's Office and the City of Bridgeton, the City of Noah, and the City of Byman regarding automated license plate reader. Resolution 2024-463. Resolution authorizing amendment to the interdepartmental agreement between the Cumberland County Prosecutor's Office and the Cumberland County Sheriff's Office for the automatic license plate readers. Resolution 2024-464. Resolution authorizing direct inmate housing contract between the County of Cumberland and the County of Salem with respect to the housing of Cumberland County adult, male, and female inmates at the Salem County Jail. Resolution 2024-465. Resolution authorizing amendment to shared services agreement between the County of Cumberland and the Counties of Salem and Cape Michael Provision of Workforce Development Board Services. Resolution 2024-466. Resolution reassigning of workers' compensation matter entitled Kenneth Thomas Burks, County of Cumberland Claim Petition Number 2010-28899 and setting initial ceiling. Resolution 2024-467. Resolution of the County of Cumberland authorizing making an application to the Local Finance Board pursuant to NJSA 4A067-1 FSET for review and/or approval of the proposed intercounty agreement for the creation of authority to be known as a regional rehabilitation and reentry center of Salem, Gloucester, and Cumberland. Resolution 2024-468. Resolution authorizing shared service agreement with Bergen County for the provision of juvenile housing. Resolution 2024-469. Resolution of payment of bills. Do I have a motion, a second?
Shall move. Give me a second.
Yes, second.
Okay. Before we vote, okay, on resolution 2024-430, I have to abstain. I'm paying the bills, item 2024, item 4404413 for clarification.
I have some comments, so director, what do you want to make comments now before we vote, I hope so.
Yes.
Okay. I just wanna, this was part of last, the, obviously, it's 438, it's just a simple resolution should cancel the expired contracts. This is where the millennial engineers, money's coming back to us. It's $361,853.76 because we already have another company handling that. So it was talked about, and just wanted to make sure people knew that it's actually been done in that resolution.
Thank you, Commissioner, for clarifying.
Yeah. Give me a second here, if you guys can do it. On 437, 224, 437, which we're buying equipment, it's kind of, you know, just playing, we're buying equipment from a pool, but one key thing about this is that we've been cannibalizing equipment for years now, and finally, we're getting away from that. We're actually, this is, it sounds like a real simple, it's a, we're buying equipment to fix something, but we're actually fixing something without taking apart. It's equipment that has more, has a lot of life to it, left, and we're actually fixing the order of the right piece of equipment to fix it, part to fix it, so we can continue using it. How we do this on a lot of other stuff and don't cannibalize some things to fix others, it's a good, at least it's a good start, and I appreciate the explanation I got because I had some issues with that. I'm pleased that, and this is on the... On what, I see that the agreement with the, I don't know, I'm looking for the number, I think it was the last number, with Salem County, the name of the jail, the regional rehabilitation, it's actually a nice road that this commission's gone down. We're getting to the, this will be a year of deciding, fixing, deciding how it's gonna be done, setting up all the parameters, so it's really nice to disagree with. It's not a shared service agreement, it's a partnership with 200 counties. It's a solid problem, it's been a long-term problem, and basically having all, really every member, every part, labor, management, and all, all on the same page, coming together at the agreement that this is a good thing to do, and here it is. This is another document, it's the right place, and would just keep going along with it. Actually, it'll probably be a model for the state when we're done, so. It, I, along with that twist, it was brought up the idea of the juvenile, which we were paying through the nose, but you had heard, 77 facilities in the entire state. With this, this may open up possibilities for the county jail to be reinvigorated and handle a problem that we may actually become a second place for those juveniles and actually maybe help bring in revenue for the county and for the jail operation. With that, on another resolution, which, yeah, they were fixing the jail, putting a new HVAC system on it, I had, this was 443.
That was an emergency situation.
I'm fine with it. Actually, I asked why we're doing this, I thought we already fixed it. We are now gonna replace the system, and I thought, well, we're getting near the end of life, why are we replacing while we're spending money? And it was told me that this will now, if we turn, the annex will actually be able to be used, it's so efficient that we can tie the annex and upgrade the annex at the same time. It's a, so it's actually a very smart buy.
We did that because we need a rework for the city.
So it's actually, yes, exactly, so it's actually, we're not just throwing good money at the bad, we're actually upgrading the system and really making this building possible for future, future use of it.
Save some, but the solution's really good.
Sorry, I'm on a roll here, so. All right, thank you, Derek.
Thank you, Commissioner.
I had a question on one. Number 6431-24, it looks like the prosecutor's office is getting five new vehicles coming in, so I was just wondering, is that retiring five old vehicles, and what's gonna come of those vehicles?
I just think it might go 51.
Good evening, Jennifer Webber, County Prosecutor. We routinely purchase so many vehicles per year so that I can have truth in budgeting and be able to budget, and then what happens is we bring vehicles on and we take vehicles out of the rotation. When we take vehicles out of the rotation, we turn them over to the county, and for the most part, because we have a really good schedule now, and we're rotating out cars as we rotate in, those cars are viable to be used by other departments.
Well, now it's gonna be to my point, so you're thinking five cars are gonna come back to us and perhaps see if we can utilize that with department.
Sure. Correct. Correct. And we are buying trucks, and I, when I was looking at the agenda, because they are coming out of capital and they have to be trucks. It's becoming harder and harder to purchase vehicles off the county. So if there's any help that can come from the commissioners, maybe to the association of counties, it will be more cost-effective to have some trucks and some cars, but it's been, we've always, we seem to miss the contracts for the cars.
Let's talk about those. Let's talk about those.
Yeah. Thank you.
And the process is, Mr. DeWitt will give me a list of those five cars and a list of the entities that have requested a vehicle. And so we, and then you guys will ultimately approve any such recommendation or disapproval.
Very good.
Thank you.
I'm just trying to stay on the topic.
We should tell him.
So they're getting Jeep Laredos. It's SUV, so I know Subarus are a little more cost-efficient, they're considered SUVs, but that is not in the program that we use.
Yeah, we're sort of, we're sort of stuck with the state contract. The prosecutor is stuck with the state contract that she just said.
So it has to be that.
We have to buy, so I don't, I've never seen a Subaru on a state contract, it's all more American, the car is.
And it's the same for resolution 448, what's it?
448.
448.
About the 244.
Yeah, it's the same for them as well.
It's basically an American car, it's on the...
And then I also, I feel that I should abstain from resolution 2024-445 regarding Downtownship.
Commissioner, your name? Any comments? Commissioner, Commissioner Lozzy, you want?
Yes, I am.
You have any comments about the resolution?
No, it's not, it's fine.
Thank you. Commissioner Sorrow?
I'm good.
Okay.
Do I have a motion, a second? Okay. We'll call Commissioner Aubrey.
Yes.
Commissioner Loz.
Yes.
Commissioner Marchand.
Yes.
Commissioner Sorrow.
Yes, for the abstention.
Commissioner Taylor.
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero.
Yes.
Director Soleil.
Yes.
Do I have a motion, a second, to adopt resolution 2024-426 through 2024-469, I consent.
So moved. Thank you.
Commissioner Aubrey.
Yes.
Commissioner Loz.
Yeah.
Commissioner Marchand.
Yes.
Commissioner Sorrow.
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor.
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero.
Yes.
Director Soleil.
Yes.
Romero, the resolution.
Right.
Do I have a motion, a second, to accept treasuries for as provided?
So moved.
On favor?
Aye.
Do I have a motion, a second, for authorizing payment of all salaries and wages?
So moved.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Do I have a motion, a second, over public comment on new business only?
So moved.
On favor?
Aye.
Okay, public comment, new business only. You step up, you have five minutes to state your name and your, please go.
Sandy Acevito of the Deerfield Township. I will be providing a copy of my comments to place on the official record. My comments tonight are in reference to IAS 5 on tonight's agenda, reading of the minutes of the last public meeting which took place on July 5th, 2024. I'll tell you, Joe, right now, this feels very deja vu to me. It was just a few short years ago that you and I stood outside of this very building trying to prevent special interests, political party bosses, and members of our own county government from attempting the hostile takeover of our public facilities. And now, you sit in the very same seat, attempting the very same thing. Shame on you. I really thought you were going to be different, and shame on your colleagues that are in favor of such a move. What makes this attempt very different than the last is the many county residents, business owners, professional business leaders, and county professionals that collaborate with CCIA on a regular basis that are coming forward in opposition to such a misguided attempt. I'd like to thank them for their support, and hopefully, it will make a difference. At the special meeting called on July 5th, those same professionals came forward to gaining insight as to this board's reasons for attempting to derail the economic growth that is taking place in our county today and to express the hypocrisy behind it all. I would encourage everyone to read the minutes and to review the video of that meeting to fully understand why your veto of the current CEO's contract is not in the best interest of our counties. The comments made by the speakers brought to light the numerous failings of this board in doing your jobs as county commissioners. With a 30% attendance rate as liaisons to CCIA, you are very, you may be very, excuse me, you may very well lack the knowledge required to fully understand and address the issues. So rather than to do your job, you chose to second-guess the CCIA board and the job that they are doing. Joe, you commented to me, rather proudly, I might add, we made history, that this was somehow an historical event. However, without considering the consequences to taxpayers of this county and its economic future, in reality, it was instead just an empty gesture on this board's part because it was done without any clear objective other than making history by vetoing something because you can't. And in my opinion, your actions displayed a great lack of leadership, and frankly, that's the only thing that made, you know, made history that day. I must say that the pretext that Ms. Loz used at the July 5th meeting and that you agreed with, using me as your scapegoat, was very unprofessional and not up to the caliber of leadership that we need in our county government. And for that matter, very poor judgment coming from a person in your line of work, Ms. Loz. That in and of itself is very disappointing and concerning, considering your immediate future political aspirations and a leadership role in our county government. The bottom line is that I should not have had to request from you, an audience with CCIA. That's your job, which is another failing on your part, misusing my genuine concern for accountability... Misusing my genuine concern for accountability and good governance does not excuse your lack of fiduciary oversight. Misquoting me and misrepresenting me to suit your needs only demonstrates to us how shallow this board is by looking for excuses in order to justify your actions that do not benefit the county taxpayers, but that only satisfies your political bosses. And oh, yeah, we mustn't forget special interest role in all of this because it's in there and recognize it all too well. In closing, if this board would like to seriously listen to ideas that I may have for your consideration, let's talk. But I guess that should be a subject for revisiting. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate your comments.
I'm Dave Hamrahann, president and CEO of Century Savings Bank, Cumberland, Ireland. I don't know this lady, but she's a tough act to follow. My comments will not have the verve that hers did, but similar to her, I'm here to speak, um, in regard to the board's action to be taken with respect to the CEO's contract with CCIA. I've been a banker in Cumberland County for nearly twenty years. For most of that time, we've had the pleasure of working on projects with which CCIA is involved. And I can tell this board that Jerry Velasquez is a smart and creative and energetic and clever representative of CCIA who finds ways to get things done, who, in all of my experience, acts with the best interest of the county at heart. And he, um, he really, he laid us a good job for the county. I can't think of a time where there was a project that he advocated that didn't go off successfully. I can't think of a time that the project that he advocated where he was anything other than professional and again, acting in the county's best interests. And as somebody who runs a bank with hundreds of borrowers in this county and thousands of depositors in this county, um, there's, there's lots of benefit that I've seen firsthand that county business owners and residents have received hundreds of leadership of CCIA. And I, uh, I encourage them to want to renew his contract. Thank you very much.
Okay. Anyone else?
Ryan Rivers, Marsh River Township.
Sir, could you get to the microphone because nobody might hear you.
I thought I was loud enough.
Well, we just want to make sure it's on the record, that's all.
I was trying to help with feedback and everybody's here and I want to go on down.
Ryan Rivers, Marsh River Township. I would address just last month about the drainage along County Route seven, ten, Station Route. He's came out and just jetted a couple of pipes, me and the other neighbor. Thank you for that. The problem's still there, like they cut the grass and just, you know, the trench is full of debris now, so that's not draining at all. And then the project that he's had on the other side of this street, redoing the stream to move, remove standing water, that's all that's in there now. It's just full of water, it's standing water. The other, I was told, they came out and looked at it, cut the grass over there and said they were cleaning it up. And then as far as anything else, that's the mosquito, is there a mosquito commission?
Yes.
The mosquito commission is wrong. And I don't know how to get in touch with the mosquito commission, so. But, uh, Maggie.
Good to hear it, we'll get that. Take care.
Hope everybody can hear me. Um, Jerry Velasquez, I'm the president and CEO of the Cumberland County Improvement Authority. Sent a letter to the commissioners, to the solicitor, and to the clerk on July fifteenth. I wanted to read that. It's my understanding, it doesn't have to be put into the record, so I just wanted it to be part of the public record. Miss Cottis, please accept this letter as a formal response to questions that have been raised related to the authority as well as my position as president and CEO. During a special commissioners meeting held on July fifth, twenty twenty-four, there was a comment raised by Commissioner Loz related to a report that was requested by the public. The record, recorded request that was made by Ms. Sandra Ace Avito during the twenty-fifth commissioner meeting was to request that the CEO of the CCIA give us a presentation of all projects that they were working on that involve county taxpayer funds. While the CCIA has many projects with the county, none require or have required county contribution to satisfy the financial obligations of the CCIA. In fact, as will be highlighted below, the CCIA provides significant financial cash contribution and shared service savings to the county. Please note that at no time has there been a request from the commissioners to the authority regarding a presentation during the meeting. Additionally, I would like to point out that my monthly report highlighting the projects and initiatives of the authority is presented during our regularly scheduled public meetings held the fourth Wednesday of every month. The authority's monthly meetings have been held, I'll fail, since my tenure began in April of twenty thirteen. As you know, the commissioners designate two liaisons to the authority board. Liaisons are invited to every meeting and are provided with my monthly report along with the meeting agenda and proposed resolutions being considered by the board. Each month prior to the authority public meeting, commissioner liaisons, the administrator, and the CFO receive copies of the agenda and proposed resolutions. Commissioner liaisons are invited to attend and are specifically included and allotted time to make comments during the monthly agenda. Since January twenty-two, when Commissioner Soleo was appointed to the authority as one of the liaisons, there have been twenty-nine meetings. Commissioner liaisons have been present at eleven of those meetings. No commissioners contacted the authority president and CEO prior to, nor did anyone attend the June twenty-sixth meeting. Construction meetings to update county projects and initiatives are held every other week. There have been seventy meetings in that timeframe. To review project status and next steps, minutes are forwarded to commissioner liaisons, administrator, and CFO immediately after conclusion of the meeting. No meetings have ever been attended by current commissioner liaisons. In addition, that to further update the county commissioners, county economic development communities are held, providing updates regarding authority, county economic development projects and initiatives. The agendas and minutes are provided prior to and after meetings. Eleven meetings were held from February twenty-two, twenty-two through June twenty-four. Current commissioner liaisons attended one of those meetings. There have been several misrepresentations made by the current commissioners regarding my salary and the proposed increase. I would like to provide a clarification of the facts. My tenure at the authority began on April first, twenty thirteen, with an initial salary of one hundred thirty-three thousand dollars plus health benefits. Twelve years later, January twenty-five, my proposed salary is two hundred thousand seven hundred sixty-five dollars. My health benefits are waived. The proposed salary represents an average increase of three point six percent over that twelve-year period. The proposed increase from my current twenty twenty-four salary to proposed January twenty-five salary is three percent. In twenty thirteen, the authority's annual budget was ten point three million, and there were no economic development, redevelopment initiatives, initiatives or projects. Responsibilities of this position have grown exponentially over the past eleven years. The annual budget is now in excess of thirty-four million. We employ approximately ninety employees, and we manage and develop many properties and projects throughout the region. Annual increases are determined by the board of the authority and approved by county commissioners based on performance and the success of the authority. The authority budget is one hundred percent supported by the operations. Twenty twenty-four total compensation mine is less than four other authority directors in the south Jersey region that includes Cumberland, Seattle, Cape May, Gloucester only. During that same time period, the annual cash contribution to the county from the authority increased from just under four hundred thousand per year. Excuse me?
Thirty seconds.
To just under eight hundred thousand. This represents the highest contribution of any other authority in the county. Total unrestricted cash contribution from the authority to the county during this period was six point seven million. Annual savings was twenty million five hundred ninety-two thousand seven hundred sixty-six via our shared services. I'm going to skip this, but I'd like this to be part of the record because my time is delayed. Kind of, kind of amazing that you've delayed my time in such a situation like this, but I'm going to give this to Mr. Carr and I'm going to hoop.
Yeah. Yeah, give it to somebody else.
State your name. Hello. Where are you from?
My name is Joe Rapl, I'm the chief lending officer of Century Savings Bank. From Kevin Jerry Velasquez, I'll say that during that same period, the annual, we already talked about cash contributions. Annual county savings from two thousand sixteen to two thousand twenty-four rose from just under one million dollars to more than four point five million. Total savings during this period were twenty million five hundred ninety-two thousand seven hundred sixty-six dollars, which does not include contributions made with surrounding communities. The landfill is a major component of the authority, provides significant public infrastructure and services to the residents of the county. The landfill operation has one of the lowest tip fees in the state, widely regarded as one of the best landfills in the state. Out of state as well as international visitors have commented on the efficiency and cleanliness of the solid waste complex. The landfill microgrid creates sustainable electricity via methane gas, which is extracted from the landfill that runs the entire complex and the authority administrators.
Jerry, I see why you want to skip that part. Hm?
I'm going to skip those things too and say, in summary, a billion dollars of economic impact that we made from two thousand fifteen, two thousand twenty-three, there have been more than seven hundred million dollars of project development between two thousand fifteen, two thousand twenty-three. The variable-based increase of one point three billion dollars. Median incomes increased by twenty percent. The Northeast Precast Trail National facilitated via shared service between the city of Ireland and the authority, which represents a two hundred million dollar private investment. CCIA facility with the authority business development activities, a hundred and eighty million dollar private investment. Another facility with the authority business development activities, forty-five million private investment. The C-Tech facility in all expansions, Rowan Medicine Building, and the R.C.S.J. campus. Jerry's purpose of this letter was to provide factual information that may be helpful to the commissioners. And one thing I'd like to say is that as a partner of the authority during the last thirteen years at two different banks, I've found Jerry to be trustworthy and honest. And lack of management continuity at the authority represents a risk to us as partners that could make us less inclined to want to support his activities in the future. I urge you to seriously consider removing this contract.
Okay. Anyone else?
Good evening. My name is Lumaga Zoo. I'm here on behalf of the CEO group, seeing Commissioner Sorrow and Judge Johnson. All we need is Trout and Riney, we could have an old timers game like that. It's good to see everybody. Uh, I sent a letter on July fifth to Judge Johnson on behalf of the CEO group, supporting, um, Mr. Velasquez. It was a unanimous resolution by the board. Judge, I just want to know if that, that letter was not read tonight and it was not read on July fifth. Did it come through? Did you all get that letter?
Yeah.
You did?
Yeah, I did.
Is that correct? It was not received?
I have the letter. I have the letter, that would be my fault, but.
No, I'm not going to blame you. You're too good of a guy to ever blame on anything. Let me just recite then, uh, the letter indicated the support of the CEO group from Mr. Velasquez. And I'm not going to repeat things that have been said previously. I would indicate though, and this may surprise you, although Mr. Sorrow and Judge Johnson will remember, I had differences with the improvement authority director once. And, uh, we ask for reports and we ask for accountability. So I totally support that being part of your purview. I am surprised though, that at the July fifth meeting, and apparently at tonight's meeting, maybe I'm wrong, uh, there was no response to any of the citizens. Because Ridgeway and I had lots of meetings and I was sure to respond to all of her questions and she, when she came to our meeting this morning. I'm concerned that the county is going to lose the leadership of someone who frankly, in the private sector, could make two times what he's making. And I suspect that if he winds up going and is replaced by a political appointee without the experience, um, you're going to lose the confidence of, of some parts of the business community. I don't pretend to speak for the entire business community. I can share one point to you. Oh, I want to go back to accountability. Do you still, director, do you still have department head meetings? Do you have them monthly?
Yes, we do.
You do?
We have a department head meeting.
So when I was director, I would actually go to department head meetings. And I would actually insist that the executive director of both the improvement authority and the C, the utility authority go to the meetings. That may be one way to have communication and accountability by asking those directors to come. I used to, I guess welfare is now part of you. Once it's separate, I would have the welfare board come. That would be another way to have literally monthly accountability as to what's going on. So there's a suggestion perhaps. A couple of, about six weeks ago, uh, I had a group that has a billion dollar fund that wants to do investment in a couple of different areas, and specifically two hundred fifty million dollars in Cumberland County, as I suggested to come to Cumberland. And we met with Jerry. They were so aggressive with him that they asked for a follow-up meeting in New York City. That's supposed to happen, I think, next week or the weekend, where they would deploy two hundred fifty million dollars into this camp. I can assure you that if Mr. Velasquez is replaced by someone who they don't know, someone doesn't have the depth of experience, and I think it would be tough to replicate that experience, they're going to be less likely to deploy that type of money into this camp. They might still, if you were to replace him with someone of equal quality, but I suspect that would be difficult. The CEO group board, as, uh, I spoke with the president, San Pepitone, today in the Secretary of Treasury. We would like to invite the county commissioners, uh, to the extent that you can legally, to come to our August sixth board meeting for August twelfth general meeting and explain the reasons. Because we only know one side of the story, which is Jerry's side, because he's a member of our group. But if you have reasons that are legitimate reasons, and not political reasons, but legitimate reasons, uh, we would invite you to come and talk to us because all of my members who've spoken with me, who've had the opportunity to speak with individual commissioners or other elected officials who have interest in this matter, have indicated that they cannot find a reason except for two. One, because of the jail, which I would suggest he was told to do by your predecessors and shouldn't have bothered, uh, redoubt his negative. And secondly, uh, because he's making too much money. As I think Mr. Velasquez indicated, he makes a three, he gained a three and a half percent increase. I suspect if you look at, um, prior administrator salaries.
Thirty seconds.
Thank you. Prior administrator salaries, uh, and you extrapolate the same amount of years at the same experience, you get the same kind of number if somebody stays that long. You have the capacity to do something extraordinary here, and that is to change your mind and to keep somebody. By the way, you have the capacity to do one other thing, and that is to enter into a three-year contract rather than a five-year contract with him and say, you know what? We're giving you the options to do that.
Don't stick to negotiations, please.
Well, I'm not, I'm not.
All right, go ahead, go ahead.
I'm allowed to because I don't, I'm not one of you guys. But I appreciate the time and I just would remind you, since I had a minute taken for me, I would remind you that, as I said the other day, uh, the entirety of the business community is paying attention to the action of this board on this vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else have a comment?
Go ahead, Mr. Ray.
No, you come up here.
Yeah, come up here.
I know you're on the subject. Let's carry on the subject. I want to get off.
You want to get off the lot?
Subject.
Off the subject, so do I.
State your name and where you're from, sir.
Name is Joe Condo from Stone Matter City. Forty years of South Jersey politics and I've heard my share of misinformation and I can't believe what we're hearing here tonight. Let's talk about some of the facts that are actually out there. No action taken by this board of commissioners did anything at all to adversely affect Mr. Velasquez's current contract, which I will remind the commissioners lasts until the end of this year. It's really still befuddling to many of us why the authority, and where did that name come from anyway, the authority, that kind of creates the, the tenor of the entire problem we have right now. What did they give up? Cumberland County or improvement, who I think we'll still call them the CCIA. In any event, why the CC, board of the CCIA chose to act so quickly, so early in the year, without, as far as I know, consultation with the board of county commissioners is a bit befuddling. I don't know that any of the county commissioners was contacted by the, and the members of the board of the IA in an effort to try to come to some terms that would be acceptable to the board of county commissioners. But let's keep a couple of things in mind. No action taken by this board has adversely affected Mr. Velasquez's current contract. No action taken by this board prevents the board of the IA from entering into the future contract with Mr. Velasquez. And no action taken by this board has in any way suggested for even a.
And no action taken by this board has in any way suggested for even a moment that Mr. Velasquez is being fired. This board doesn't have the power to fire Mr. Velasquez, and everyone in this room knows that. The idea that this is about firing Jerry is misinformation, and it needs to be stopped. What we're talking about here is a change in the way this government is going to conduct itself. The Board of Commissioners is accountable to the taxpayers and the residents and the people of Cumberland County, and the authority is accountable to the Board of County Commissioners. We've heard it a dozen times, we've heard it once. The commissioners should come to the IA meetings. You get the minutes you can read, why do you need to go to the IA meetings? Because the IA thinks that this Board of Commissioners is accountable to it. Well, the days in the shadow of government are over. The IA will be accountable to the Board of County Commissioners in this county, and as soon as the IA realizes that, the sooner we'll all be able to have a reasonable dialogue about what's to become of Mr. Velasquez and his leadership with the IA. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I know I make a comment like that.
Shocker.
Tell me about this stuff real quick. Good evening, I'm Nancy Ridgeway from the Deerfield Fairgrounds Township. I think this board was just told that they are accountable to the citizens and the taxpayers of this county. At your special meeting, you blamed a citizen for something she asked for, for the decision that she was making. I get up here quite often and cry about the position that your public works department and engineering department put me in. A gentleman just got up here a few minutes ago, I guess he's in the same kind of problem that I'm in, except I think mine's a little bit deeper than his. And this committee takes no action, the committee before you takes no action, so I'm assuming that citizens really don't count in this county, nor the taxpayers. You're going to do what you want to do, anytime you want to do, regardless if you're told that there's an infraction being made. So I'll see you next month, and maybe we'll discuss it again. Goodbye.
Thank you, Mr. Ridgeway. Motion closed.
I want to make sure nobody else is getting motion to close.
I see what goes the ramp.
Okay, motion.
All favor.
All right.
Reports.
No, no. Just a couple, the planning board just had, and this is, I just want to point out to, and I said it before, we just reviewed a data center in the city of Island. The city of Island's doing something a little different, we are, their smart system. It was, as I was saying, it's the largest check ever delivered, I never saw it, so delivered to the county to review a project. But I want to point out that, you know, many of the critics of the middle mile had said, we'll have no customers, there'll be nothing, nothing will go. Well, all of a sudden, we've got a concrete plan that happens to be in Island, hopefully it'll be on the ones in our data center. And it has multi-phases, it's, it's, I just want to point out how important that is, it's a step, that's one piece, that's not the whole thing. But it reupplies the county planning department, and has, you know, many more hurdles to overcome, but at least it's coming out of the woodwork. So I just pointed out, this is how it starts, and you can't, you can't, I don't have a personal wall, but this is what we see, what I see can happen if the middle mile is pushed and then the end mile is adopted, that we don't know what it's, but if we put the infrastructure in place, good things will happen, and here's a good one. I also point out that the library has, they do programming all the time, and one of the good things that they're having right now, and this is part of the, they have a reading program, they have over 300 kids, they're going to individuals, reading this program. We're going to be, this board just recently looked over the idea of expansion in the Moore's River Township. Just think that starts catching on different to another library. I also want to point out that the city of Bridgeton, we are going back over, I mentioned to Commissioner Marchand, that we've proposed the idea of working with the city of Bridgeton, providing programming, they have to hand you up to do that, but extending it there also. This is where it starts, and the library's very, has been very aggressive on programming and bringing things in, having kids and teens and adults do their computer programs to learn and educate, and we're seeing a result. I just wanted to make sure you guys knew about the reading program, so. And I just make a comment about the fair, and I know you all attended the fair. I thought the fair was, despite the rain, I thought it was very successful. I was very impressed with the way public works, and anyone else, I mentioned the, how good the fairgrounds looked. And I also want to say to the Sheriff's Department how impressive they were. We had no, no problems or minor problems, and the fair was, it was just, it was just good event, and I felt good being in there, and you guys make your own comments about it, but again, Cumberland County's pulled it off, and the fair association definitely pulled it off. We just, we just bought the sidelines. They do a great job doing that, and more improvements as we're planning is just going to make it better and better. So the fairgrounds is really going to become a centerpiece to our park systems as we go. And that's it.
Commissioner Saro?
Director, just have to make a comment about what happened here tonight. One, I want to thank everybody that came. I want to thank everyone that spoke. Why he came, I don't know why. I don't understand. No one was fired, as Condo said. No one's contractually dissented. We didn't know about the contract till later. We're not looking for an adversarial relationship with the CCIA, or with Mr. Velasquez, or with the CEO Group. What fascinates me is that it's being done at this setting, when every one of us is accessible and can be talked to personally. That's what fascinates me. That's what concerns me. We're all readily accessible. So why it happened here, I have no idea. As long as everybody understands that, the CCIA is still working. That's all I have to say.
Any Commissioner? Commissioner Marchand?
I have to agree with Mr. Albert that the county fair was fantastic. I've been going there since I can remember. I like to hold residence in Cumberland County, I've gone to the county fairs since my parents told me. Wonderful. Once again, the grounds look fantastic. Thank you so much to our public corps and everyone who I had in and employed at all. Once again, it was amazing. My kids always enjoy going, and I enjoy going, look forward to it, I view. Now, this summer's been one of the hottest summers I can imagine, so I just want to urge everyone to make sure they stay safe. We have another hot one coming up. I know the county offers cooling centers throughout the county, I think there's a list available on the website. I would encourage anyone who's in need of that, please look into that. These are available for everyone. I'd like to see people obviously get to a cool spot and cool off with all this hot weather coming. So just wanted to make sure everyone's aware of that and get some information for them in the meeting. Thank you.
Any other Commissioner? Commissioner Taylor?
Yes, I would like to say, in regard to the CCIA, I did have the opportunity to tour the CCIA in the past month. Beautiful facility, extremely clean. I did talk to Jerry about some of the projects that he has done, and I was not present at that special meeting. I had, recently have had surgery and have had some, you know, personal medical issues going on. I will say this, had I been present, I would have had to abstain because my husband and I own a company that does work on CCIA projects. So I do want to offer that up to the public. I'm sure everybody, they weren't here for the special meeting, they heard about it and then have heard that Commissioner Taylor was not present. So I wanted to set the record straight on that. I also would like to comment on the Cumberland County Fair. I was, I was there opening night. I did not get to walk the fair because I had knee surgery. So I would like to say I enjoyed seeing Jaden Jacobson receive the Cindy Hetzel Dream Award from 4H, and I would like to congratulate her. Cindy Hetzel was an outstanding leader for the 4H community for many, many years. I also, you know, have attended the county health department meetings via the phone, and would like to congratulate them on the great job that they're doing, and they continue to receive grants to, you know, fund a lot of their projects. Also, at the monthly commissioners meeting, South Jersey Commissioners Meeting, that was held in Seattle, the Cape May Zoo came, and then a presentation. At that presentation, or I should say afterwards, we were offered as commissioners to go on the back, you know, behind the scenes of the Cape May Zoo, and I am looking to figure out how we can get more money to donate to our Bridgeton Zoo. So Matt Polarski, he did agree to join me on a alley and route we will be going to Cape May. We haven't set it up yet, waiting for my leg to get a little better to, you know, participate, and that's all I have.
Any other Commissioner? Commissioner Barr?
I have much to say, other than that county fair was, really came out really nice, the grounds were very clean, and I had a great time, and turned out well. I visited those about a month ago, and had a great experience over there with employees. I see a new morale going on, people being higher. Sure, contact me doing this a couple of weeks, and told me, told me we need this, and I'm working on it, and I have sent them my few words, and this is the kind of teamwork we like to see. And I commend you on that, and you have been really moving forward with us, with the commission of work. I appreciate that. C-C Tech's here, so I want to pick, then I go down to, I go down to C-C Tech almost every night now, paint and play pickleball, you know? I wish we had some lights there, because an old guy like me, when the hot weather is, I start to melt. So maybe if we, we had lights there, and it is cool, maybe we could enjoy that a little more, you know? But we'll talk about that, it's pretty good. And that's about all, you know, this is all I have to say. Good thanks.
Commissioner Lodes, are you still on?
Yes, I am.
Do you have any Commissioner reports that you'd like to speak about?
Well, first of all, I would like to absolutely extend a congratulations to all of the scholarship recipients from C-C Tech this evening. What an amazing accomplishment that is, and I hope it really does climb to a lot of opportunities that you will take, each of those scholarship recipients will take, and certainly funnel that back into their communities and pay it forward. I do echo the sentiments of everybody tonight about the fair, the Cumberland County Fair Commission did a fantastic job, as they always do. It is something so very deeply personal to all of them, and it really does show, because the fair just gets better and better, and truly does showcase the heart and soul of Cumberland County, and that is, I think, why we all love to be there. We all feel that energy, and it's because of the love and the hard work that that commission does put into it, and all of our county employees. I do want to thank everybody who came out tonight to speak on behalf of Jerry Velasquez and the Cumberland County Improvement Authority and the July 5th meeting. We have all ran on and promised the taxpayers of Cumberland County transparency in this government. And when I heard employees from the public come and ask for information, and we were able to provide it with plenty of time for the authority board to continue their negotiations with the contract from Mr. Velasquez, I really did want our board, in the interest of transparency, to take that opportunity. I do really appreciate Mr. Velasquez coming to the meeting tonight, giving your updates, and certainly providing very clear correspondence to the commissioners and to the public as far as everything that is going on. And that's what this board is about. That has been my mission, is to always be transparent with the public and with the taxpayers of Cumberland County, and I'm glad that we have done that here tonight. Mr. Velasquez is still in place until the end of the year, and this does give plenty of time for the authority board to continue on with what they are doing. So I just really want to echo my appreciation for everyone coming out tonight, and certainly all the information that's been shared with the public tonight. Thank you very much, Mr. Velasquez. And last but not least, we have, I just want to make a little announcement, because I am the lead sponsor of culture and heritage in Cumberland County, and we do have our Puerto Rican festival underway this week, and our, it's going to culminate with a parade this weekend, and I hope that everyone gets out there to celebrate Puerto Rican culture in Cumberland County.
Any other Commissioner? Much appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have no closing statements. Do we have a
We have a closing session, huh?
Yeah.
We need a
I'm good.
And there's not intend to be any action here.
No action. Okay. Any other motion?
Resolution 2024-47, the resolution providing for a meeting not open to the public in accordance to the provisions of New Jersey Center for Environment and Bear of the Public Meeting Act, MJSA 10,044. Matters relating to legislation, negotiations, and income client privilege, matters relating to employment relationship. Do I have a motion? Second.
So moved. Second.
Commissioner Albert?
Yes.
Commissioner Lodes?
Yes.
Commissioner Saro?
Yes.
Commissioner Marchand?
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Director O'Hara?
Yes.
Director Saleau?
Yes.
Hey, Cat?